That's more impactful if the microphone is ready to go when I do that. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask Sherri Simonsen, our Public Records Officer/ Clerk of the Day, to please call the roll. With that said, I do see everybody's here.
Councilmembers present in establishing Quorum, Folcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beaumont, will you please lead us on the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As everybody's aware, we have a weather event coming in. You can see that the lights keep flickering. We have a couple of things that we want to get taken care of, so in the event that the power goes out, we want to try to get a couple of things taken care of right away. Unless council has objection to it, I have the following amendments to the agenda. First, following public comments, we're going to add in a 5.05, which is moving the proclamation for Police and Fire Week to just before the confirmation consideration, so that our PD folks can head out. But I do want to recognize them here this evening. Consent agenda will stay the same. We will then make, and Sherri, you might want to just sort of take some notes, or we can give this to you. We're going to make the legislative priorities item number five. We're going to make the Monroe 30 annexation item number two. We're going to make the proposed code cleanup item number four. We're going to make the school impact fees code amendment item number three. We're going to make the ordinance for the biennial budget item number one. Please note that's under unfinished business, but we'll move that up in the agenda. And then we will make the lodging tax advisory committee awards item number four. Okay, does anybody have objection to making those adjustments? And I'm going to keep Debra's notes here.
I have two fours. I just noticed that on that list.
Okay, well, we'll take the first four first and the second four second.
There you go.
So the first four then would be the code cleanup, and the second four would be the lodging tax advisory award.
To get last.
Okay, all right. Everybody cool with that?
Good.
All right, thank you, everybody. So the first item, the next item on the agenda then is public comments, item four. We did the pledge of allegiance. Oh, thank you. There are no comments, and then I'm going to look out in the audience. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? Okay, Luke is looking in his backpack, so I'll take that as a note from Luke. All right. The next item on the agenda then is, as amended, our recognition for Police and Fire Week. Proclamation's in the packet, so you can read it there. So rather than reading that, I just am going to express today how much I truly appreciate our police and fire personnel. Fire's not here this evening. We didn't notify them that we were doing this this evening, so I'll just go ahead and address fire, I'm sorry, police. I really appreciate all the work that you do. You are here and keeping us safe when we're out of town during the day at work, and also when we're asleep at night. And you all do a really difficult job, and from the bottom of my heart, I truly thank you for everything you do. I also am going to take this opportunity to just express how much I appreciate the work that our police department has done this year. I know that some of you have heard about it. We went through the process for accreditation, and we are getting accreditation. I learned about that this evening. Debra and I are heading out to Waspech in Eastern Washington tomorrow, and we'll be there for the, to receive the accreditation with the chief and the deputy chief and our commander, who are all in Eastern Washington right now. So I'm going to go ahead and ask that the folks who are here on shift this evening to come on forward, and just go ahead and honor the police that are here this evening. All right. Thank you very much. Be safe, folks.
Be safe.
All right, so that takes care of item 5.05, if I'm keeping my numbers correct. The next thing that we have on the agenda is item 5.1. This is confirmation of finance director appointment. I'm going to ask the Director Worthen to come forward and introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Clap twice.
I started that, by the way. Again, good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight before you is a request for the Mayor's appointment of Julie Elsom as the Finance Director effective January 6, 2025. I had the great opportunity to interview Julie several times, as well as most everyone in this room. We're super excited to get Julie on board. As Councilmember Gamble already noticed, she is sticking with the theme, a graduate of the University of Washington, and she has over 25 years of financial experience. So we're super excited to get her on board, and Greg is happy to go back to retirement.
Yeah, and councilmembers, like I do with all of our folks that are applying for the positions in SLT, so these are our directors and the chief, I drove around town with Julie, got to know her, some, got to show her the different parts of town and how those parts connected with budget. So we went by the municipal campus so that she could see all the work occurring out there, took her by the synthetic turf fields at Lake Tye, took her up past North Hill Park that we're going to be working on, also the Union Bank Building that we now own in downtown, and so on, and so on, and so on, so that she can understand all the projects and all the work that we have done and that we are working on doing. We talked some about revenues and things like that with the construction that's going on, and I am really impressed with her and what she brings to our city, and I respectfully request your confirmation of her appointment this evening. Thank you. Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Walker, oh.
I move to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Julie Elsom as Finance Director, appointment effective January 6, 2025.
Second. The motion from Councilmember Walker, that Barnes is going to keep messing me up all night. So Councilmember Walker, and a second from Councilmember Gamble, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody, and congratulations, Director. All right. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. My turn to the council. Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford to adopt the, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, this is where things get tricky, folks. We're going to move on to unfinished business, item number 8.1, ordinance number 009, 2024, adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026, with Greg Thimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So you have in front of you the ordinance for the adoption of the...
Not on. So you have the budget ordinance, estimated revenues and appropriations are for all-in-all funds, $202,303,246. Is there any questions? We've held two public hearings, and we've had a lot of good discussion with staff, and been through a really good process, and you have before you for your adoption tonight, the ordinance for your two-year budget for the city of Monroe.
Any questions from council or a motion? I see an orange flag going up on the end. Councilmember Hanford.
No questions, Mayor, but I will move to approve ordinance number 009, 2024, adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal period January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Folcher for the requested action shown on the screen under item 8.1. I can see, okay, unfinished business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item two, and this is 7.2 under new business. It's Monroe 30 annexation interlocal agreement ILA with Anita Marrero. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm going to make this quick. I'm here to present the Monroe 30 interlocal agreement, or ILA, with Snohomish County. So I have been here before with the Monroe 30 annexation, so you may be familiar with the proposal. Back in August, I came with the 60% petition. The county will not approve the Monroe 30 annexation until we have an ILA in place. The city did have a master annexation ILA with the county, but it did expire in December of 2022. So we are currently working with the county on updating that master annexation ILA, but in the meantime, the county has agreed to a site-specific ILA for the Monroe 30 annexation. So the purpose of this ILA is to establish seamless transfer of services between the city and the county after annexation. So these services include processing of permits, which includes code enforcement, records transfer, and access to public records following annexation, surface water management, records and transportation, police services, and fire marshal services. The final ILA is attached to the agenda bill, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any. The motion for tonight is to authorize the Mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with Snohomish County, contract number 2024-123, concerning the Monroe 30 annexation.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about that, just in case we have people online. I wanted to pull this up. Forgot about the speakers. Any discuss, I'm sorry, any questions for staff or a motion? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Anita, is this the same ILA that came to us the last time the annexation was brought up for discussion, or do you say it's slightly different or modified?
So this particular ILA is site-specific to the Monroe 30. It's a little different in the sense that it's just pertaining to the, to these properties. The master ILA is concerning all properties in the UGA, so there are some additional items in that, and it's a little, it's lengthy. So that's why it's taking us a little time to get that ironed out. But yeah, this is just for Monroe 30 properties.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that. I move to authorize the Mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Snohomish County, contract number 2024-123, concerning the Monroe 30 annexation.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Gamble for the requested action shown on the screen, 7.2 new business regarding the Monroe 30 annexation interlocal agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 7.4 under new business. That is school impact fees code amendment with Kate Turtolo or Lance Bailey, our Director. Good evening, Lance.
I'm filling in for Kate tonight. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you tonight is first reading of an ordinance that will modify Chapter Three of the municipal code, which contains the impact fees related to the school district. As you're probably aware, as we went through the comprehensive plan update, the city adopted a capital facilities plan. The school districts also adopt capital facility plans as well, and there are two school districts that currently cover the city of Monroe. A very small portion is Snohomish, the majority of it is the Monroe School District. So as a part of the adoption of their capital facilities plan, they also modify, we're going to beat the power going out, they also modify, if need be, impact fees that they charge, and the school districts will charge impact fees for residential development. The city's role in this is we collect the fees as we, during our permit process, but we are just a pass-through. Those fees go, we collect them as a part of, as a part of the application fees, and then we send those to the school district. So we don't set the fees, we don't get any portion of that, and that's important to keep in mind. So the information that we, or the modification for the impact fees is really information that comes to us from the school districts. And surprisingly enough, the Monroe School District is zeroing out all of their impact fees as a, as a part of their capital facility plan. I'm not going to go into the detail of the analysis that they, that they went through, but it's ultimately related to a reduction in enrollment over the years. They do have projections for increased enrollment, looking at their, at their planning horizon, but for right now, this was the decision that they made. The Snohomish School District is lowering their impact fees for the same reason. They're also adopting a, an impact fee for townhomes and duplexes that they did not have before, and then reducing their multifamily. So again, the city is just a pass-through. We're making a modification to our chapter just to be in compliance with what the school district is doing. So if anyone has any questions, and again, this would just be first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, my turn to council. Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you, Lance. I move to accept as first reading ordinance number 011/2024, amending Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter 3.50, School Impact Mitigation Fee Program, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second, Folcher. I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Folcher for the requested action that is shown on the screen under new business item 7.4, School Impact Mitigation Fees. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next one on the agenda is new business item number 7.3. This is proposed code cleanup phase one from Monroe Municipal Code, Title 22, Unified Development Regulations, UDR. I think Director Bailey's going to be presenting on this one. Go ahead. Oh, Hannah's got her hand up just a second. Can we move Hannah forward, please? Have we invited? Perfect. Thank you. Hannah?
Hello, it's actually Leanne. I'm logged in early, from a pre-op earlier. Sorry, I didn't realize my name hadn't been changed.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. I'm excited to bring the code cleanup project forward to you tonight. It's a project a long time in the making. Next slide. So first, a little bit of background. On the UDR, in October of 2017, Monroe began a complete rewrite of our existing Unified Development Regulations under titles 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, with the goal of making a new consolidated title under Title 22, which is what we have today. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed UDR over the course of 45 meetings from October 2017 to January 2019, and City Council adopted the new UDR on April 23, 2019, and it went into effect on May 1, 2019. During that time, I was the Planning Commission Secretary, so I was with the Planning Commissioners and City Staff every step of the way while they were going through the project. So I was a natural fit when it came time to do the code cleanup, because I was there for all of those conversations. So how did this happen? You may be wondering, why do we even need a code cleanup? Well, with the whole new code, it was always expected that we were going to have updates that were needed. This was a complete, from scratch, rewrite of the Unified Development Regulations, and they're 543 pages long. Planners are human. Even though staff did their due diligence at the time, with a project of this size, there was just bound to be errors and growing pains that have come up now as part of this code cleanup process. The process of this code cleanup actually began as soon as the new UDR was adopted in 2019. Staff immediately started a spreadsheet, and we've been working on it ever since, and we add to it every time we come across something in our, in our jobs that needs to be addressed moving forward. When I started the code cleanup process, we went ahead and sorted that spreadsheet into three categories. We'll call it Phase Zero, or items that ended up after some further research that either didn't need to be changed or had already been addressed as past code amendments. A lot of these were the definitions that came before you with Anita, I believe, last year. Phase one is where we're in now. These are errors and inconsistencies that have come up as we've been using Title 22. And then the future Phase Two will be items that are going to be, require more discussion, both from at the Planning Commission level and then ultimately up through City Council. That's where your policy changes would happen. Next slide. So reasons for our code cleanup. We have about 68 items in total coming forward to you as part of this code cleanup. I went through and made a list of the reasons that some of these are, all these items made it onto the list. The examples include consistency with other sections of the Monroe Municipal Code. So an example of this is we have a parking lot buffer. In one chapter, it says it's a five-foot buffer, and in another chapter, it's more specific and says it's a five-foot buffer for a certain size, up to a 10-foot buffer, depending on the size of your parking lot. So updating the language, so it's consistent from both parts of the MMC. Consistency with state law, permit timelines came up on this, making sure that we have those days correct and are consistent with state law. Clarification, one sec, an example of this is going to be our compact parking stalls. The decision was made as part of the UDR to take out compact parking stalls, but the dimensions are still listed in one section of the parking chapter, which can be confusing to applicants. Standards in the previous chapters 17 to 20 that were inadvertently missed when the UDR was drafted in 2019. Let's see, an example of this was personal services in the mixed-use zone. The structure of the land use tables completely changed between the old municipal code and then the updated UDR, and in that process, personal services was just accidentally left off the mixed-use table wholesale. More accurate code references, we have some references that if you click on it, it will take you to a different chapter, but not to the correct section. So you get to the chapter you're trying to reference, but then you have to comb through the many pages of the chapter, so just updating those references to be more accurate. Some errors that arose while using Chapter 22. One example is that driveways and fences are listed as only being able to encroach two, two feet into the setbacks, which obviously you need your driveway to go all the way to the road. So that is going to be updated as part of this process. Let's see, missing sections of code. An example of this is in the binding site plan section, it says binding site place can be used in this situation, and then the list was completely missing. So that kind of falls into that copy and paste error, too, whoops, which is the next item. And then the last option is just Scrivener's errors, as we were going through, that have popped up. So next slide. Attachment one for your agenda bill, you will find an Excel spreadsheet, this is just a snip out of it, that lists all the changes that are going to be made. So as you're looking through these changes, this chart is going to be your best friend. So each of the proposed changes are numbered, so when you go to look through the strike and delete versions, you'll see a number next to each of them, and you can reference that back to the spreadsheet, and it will give you the existing text as it reads today, the revisions that are proposed, why it's being proposed, and then if there happens to be any notes. Right now, it's sorted by code citation. So it starts at the beginning of the UDR, as if you're reading it as a book, and works its way down. Okay. What's next? One item, I'm just going to address really quick. How, as I was working through this process, how did I start all the research? I think that's important to note. Once we had all the items identified that needed cleanup, I went through and started referencing, researching state law and the old municipal code, and then going back through prior Planning Commission agendas in minutes to find if there were inconsistencies, which one was the intent at the time. And when in doubt, I actually went back and listened to the Planning Commission audio, often for hours at a time, to make sure that I was getting the correct reference for what was intended by Planning Commission and ultimately council at the time when those items were needed. For a lot of these, it was not necessary. It was state law or a copy and paste error, but when needed, I would go back and go ahead and listen to that audio. Okay, jumping back to those next steps. So tonight was just an introduction, and I really wanted to be able to explain that table to council members, so you know, as you're reading through the agenda, you don't feel like, do I need to read every single section of all of these pages and pages of the strike and delete, but that table's a great spot to get you started. We're going to Planning Commission for our public hearing next week, and then back to Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council, and then I'll be back in front of you in early December for a public hearing, and then ultimately, hopefully, a second reading and final action before the end of the year. And at this point, my plan was not to go through every change with you, as there are a lot of them, but if anybody has any questions, anything that jumped out at them as they were reading through the packet, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Turn to the council. Do the councilmembers have any questions at this time? All right, Leanne, I don't see any questions right now, so we look forward to this coming back.
Great, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda then is item, yep.
Those are, sorry, this...
It's just introduction.
Yeah, that was from a previous PowerPoint. I apologize.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Sherri, and thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda then is item 8.2, under unfinished business. This is the 2025 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, Award Recommendations, with Liam McCorkle. Liam?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Is Patrick Doherty in the...
Yeah, we'll move Patrick forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Patrick, we're moving you into the panel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, who's up?
Yes, just waiting for the PowerPoint.
Oh, PowerPoint, yeah. It's okay, we took it out of order.
Perfect, thank you, Sherri.
All right, good evening again, Council.
Thank you for joining me on this stormy night. This is a topic that has been brought back from, or overflowed from, the November 12 meeting regarding the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC Award Recommendations. There were some questions at the previous council meeting on November 12. I've included the answers to those questions to the best of my abilities in the agenda packet, but I still thought it would be good to give you a general presentation on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and some additional items for consideration. So just starting out with a general overview of what lodging tax actually is for context, since 1988, the city of Monroe has levied a 2% lodging tax, lodging excise tax on the sale of lodging in hotel and motel rooms. And this is really governed by the state of Washington and their codes, specifically two codes in particular. And while there are overlap between these two codes, generally speaking, RCW 67.28.181 is the one that's being addressed. Perfect, thank you, Sheri. All right, good evening again, Council. Thank you for joining me on this stormy night. Um, this is a topic that is being brought back from or overflowed from the November twelfth meeting regarding the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, L TAC Award Recommendations. There were some questions at the previous council meeting on November, uh, twelfth. Uh, I've included the answers to those questions to the best of my abilities in the agenda packet, but I still thought it would be good to give you a general presentation on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and some additional items for consideration. So just starting out with a general overview of what lodging tax actually is for context. Um, since nineteen eighty-eight, the city of Monroe has levied a two percent lodging tax, lodging excise tax on the sale of lodging in hotel and motel rooms. Um, and this is really governed by the state of Washington and their codes, specifically two codes in particular. And while there are overlap between these two codes, generally speaking, R C W sixty-seven point two eight point one eight one six governs how lodging tax funding can be used. And R C W sixty-seven point two eight point one eight one seven dictates, uh, how the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is established and the procedures in there. Um, for that former point, the lodging tax fund, uh, state law requires, uh, lodging tax funds be used for four specific purposes. Those purposes being either tourism marketing, special events marketing and operations, operating expenses of tourism-related facilities and capital expenses of tourism-related facilities. And those latter two points are, uh, further restricted by only being able to, uh, apply to nonprofits, municipalities and public facility districts as well. The overall process for lodging tax, I'll get to in one of my later slides. But essentially, just about every city in Washington State, uh, hands out lodging tax funds via grants. And those grants must first go through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, who reviews applications and then submits, uh, recommendations to the city council for final approval. I'll go over that process again at the very end to show you where we are now and what the next steps will be. But that is just a general overview on the Lodging Tax Fund and the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. As part of that review of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, uh, visitor numbers are presented. So as part of the application for the twenty twenty-five lodging tax applications, um, and really in general, state law requires that applicants submit as part of their application, their estimates for the amount of overnight stays and visitors traveling fifty-plus miles, um, that would be generated by a certain event. Now, what the revised Code of Washington does not state or have any regulations on is that those events need to produce any amount of overnight stays or visitors, visitors from fifty-plus mile, miles. Nor does the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and council need to give preference to applications that demonstrate a higher amount of estimated overnight stays or travel fifty-plus miles. So this is a table that was prepared for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and was showed to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. As you can see, it shows the self-reported numbers of applicants for overnight stays and visitors estimated for fifty-plus miles. And then staff took those and divided by the, uh, funding request amounts to give you an estimate of the funding amount per overnight stay and funding per fifty-plus mile traveler. So those numbers were reviewed by L TAC as part of the application review process. Just to clarify, these numbers are self-reported by applicants, meaning they may include indirect estimates and many of them do. Um, and I will get more into that in my next slide. So like I said, a lot of those are, uh, indirect estimates. And as part of the application, staff did offer to help applicants in providing those estimates to the city using our Placer A I software, which is a very accurate data tracking software that tracks visitor trends and data. Um, regardless, uh, a lot of applicants did not utilize this service. I, to my knowledge, I don't think any applicant utilized the Placer A I numbers or requested the city to provide Placer A I numbers. Regardless, for council's consideration, staff went ahead and prepared those Placer A I numbers for the event-specific requests. Um, you can see them all on there. Um, with that said, uh, there are a couple of things to note. First one being, Placer A I cannot necessarily track all of these events. So the Fair Days Parade and community theater productions in particular could not be tracked due to large areas, uh, that aren't able to be tracked for an accurate estimate, as well as, uh, the community theaters production being in a, uh, school zone, which cannot track, uh, due to it being a sensitive area in Placer A I's eyes. And then also the Monroe Criterium and historic Monroe Snowfall, um, not having any twenty twenty-four numbers because they were not tracked previously.
Just a second, Councilmember Gamble.
So, um, this, if I remember correctly too, we can track movement, right? There's the movement analytics via the cell phones, right?
Yes.
So are we able to check from, uh, I guess, you know, obviously, we, we could have where the hotels are and check the movement between the hotels and to those events that you were able to track?
You, I, you can, I'd have to check with our, our Placer A I customer service officials to see if there's a really easy way to be able to do that. Um, but just off the top.
Should be able to geofence them, right? And I'd be very interested in that data because that's essentially what we're trying to determine, right?
Yeah.
It's like, you know, hey, there's L TAC tack, that it's great, we want to support it, you got stuff coming in. The movement analytics, if I remember the reason, because I'm trying to remember when that presentation was done. But that was like one of the things that they talked about was the ability, the ability to geofence in those areas and be able to track that movement so we can have an understanding when we have these events, if we see the ingress and ingress out of the hotels going to those locations, so.
Right, and I would, I would definitely have to check in on that. That was actually going to be my next point. Is that a lot of these numbers can't necessarily say for certain how many overnight visitors are generated by that stay. Um, but I can certainly check in with our customer service representative to see if there is a way to do that. My biggest concern is just that there's not an accurate way to determine that the people traveling to those hotels from that location are all there because of that event. But I would once again have to follow up with, uh, the Placer A I staff on that point. Once again, this is just showing the attendance numbers to council members.
Any other questions? Okay, any other questions on the screen or so far? Yeah, it's okay. I just wanted to make certain that you had finished with the floor.
Yeah, it's all good.
You, you kind of.
No, I mean, we're making logical assumptions, right? I mean, if we see, you know, the movement of that, you know, to and from, then I think we're safe. So, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fulcher.
I concur with what Councilmember Gamble had said there. It's, um, I, I think that we really do need to make sure that these are heads and beds type of moments. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else so far? All right, go ahead.
Great, yeah, just once again, these are just for attendance numbers. Um, so they're showing residents and non-residents alike. I can certainly check more, uh, to see if there's an easy way to do that, geo-fencing and C-tracking and trends of movement towards hotels and away from hotels at a later time. That, we can go to the next slide. So obviously, there are four types of requests that organizations can make when they're applying for lodging tax funds. A lot of those end up being events requests, but a lot of them also end up not being events requests. Regardless, the revised Code of Washington still requires that they provide the same sort of numbers, so those numbers are on the screen. But once again, these numbers are all self-reported and could be based on indirect estimates. And obviously, since they are non-event requests, a lot of times they're going to be looked at and evaluated differently than you might on an event request. Uh, so just wanted to put those numbers on there as well for comparison and to give you all of the numbers that we have, um, from all of the applications we received. Next slide, please. So with all of that under consideration, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee submitted recommendations for twenty twenty-five L TAC award recipients. Um, noting that a lot of these estimates are based on indirect estimates. The award, final award recommendations were determined and made by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, not just based on the visitor numbers, although that was an element that was included, but also taking into account things, um, such as the anticipated accuracy of such visitor numbers, budget and request amounts, project and applicant history, uh, logistical planning, other funding sources attained or anticipated. And then, of course, anticipated utility of lodging tax awards to both the Monroe business, uh, Monroe businesses and the community and also the applicant themselves. So with all of that in mind, those were the twenty twenty-five L TAC Award Recommendations that they listed with a total amount recommendation of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So with that, we can go to the next slide. And then I wanted to slowly wrap up with an overview of the L TAC process because it is a little bit different than a normal council action moving forward. And all of this is dictated by Washington State law in those R C Ws that I mentioned earlier. So the first step is for a staff review of applications for legality only after they receive it. And then those applications that are approved by staff for legal reasons are then passed on to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, who reviews those applications and makes their determinations. So then, L TAC will then create a list, compile a list of candidates and provide recommended funding amounts for all of those. And that gets us to where we are right now, which is council review of the L TAC recommendations. And that really leaves council with two main, um, options moving forward. Uh, council can either decide to simply approve of the lodging tax awards and that would lead us on the train to eventually sign contracts with the grantees that were selected. If, on the other hand, council determines, uh, to, or decides to adjust the amounts in any ways, uh, council will need to submit those changes to funding amounts back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will then get forty-five days to review those proposed changes and provide comment back to council. That will then get brought back to council, who will then review those comments and make a final action determination. I will add a caveat here to say if after that cycle, council reviews those comments and decides to go in a completely separate direction from what they already proposed to change and what L TAC has already recommended, they will need to go through that process again. So we'll need to get submitted back to L TAC, wait another forty-five days for review before council reviews and can make a final action determination on those proposed changes. So that is the process. Um, it goes in cycles. I will also put another caveat that, um, L TAC provides the list of candidates that can be selected from. Council, according to the revised Code of Washington, cannot select a candidate that is not on the list that is provided, uh, by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. They can suggest different funding amounts, but they cannot select another candidate that is not on that list to be a recipient of funding. Next slide, please. So that brings us to potential actions. Um, there are some alternative actions that can be taken outside of just approving the Lodging Tax Award Recommendations. I do want to make a brief comment on the very last bullet point, um, just as a word of caution to council, which is would be moving to approve some of the Lodging Tax Award Recommendations and then sending proposed changes to certain ones back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This will, uh, I would advise that this would limit the ability of council and the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to make further changes. So for example, if the council decided to approve applications B, C, D and E, uh, but set just a different funding amount for application A, um, by the time L TAC completes the review and goes through the process, uh, that limits the amount, the, the ability of council to, uh, shift funding, any sort of funding from or to, uh, application A into the other applications. So it would just be my advice to look more closely at the first two bullet points, uh, just to give council and the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee the widest breadth of ability to make, uh, further determinations. So with that, I will conclude my, uh, presentation. I know our economic development coordinator and co-leaison of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Patrick Doherty, is online to help answer any questions. Mayor?
Thank you. Questions or, uh, motion from the council? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Beautiful, thank you. I appreciate the extra information, um, uh, provided, uh, for, for tonight. And, uh, you know, I know that there's additional data points that I would love to see. And I think actually the L TAC council, they, I mean, they would want to see it too, you know, if we could get it for them because it's, but, uh, knowing that it's comprised of, you know, we've got two folks from, you know, hotels and we've got promotions on there and economic. I'm, I'm fine with moving to approve the Lodging Tax Award Recommendations of a hundred and fifteen thousand as provided by the city's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and authorized mayor to execute contracts with the recipients. Knowing that we've done our due diligence there and then I would just ask as a follow-up to try to, to give us those additional data points as we go forward, including the L TAC group.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Hanford for the first bulleted item and the actions shown on the slide on the screen, uh, that Councilmember Gamble just read into the record. Um, let's see, I saw Councilmember, um, you've already spoken to your motion, Councilmember Gamble, correct? Okay, Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and Liam, thank you very much for this really detailed, um, follow-up report, um, answering a lot of questions that we had. Very much appreciated, very thorough, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make a couple of, uh, points here before we go ahead and approve this. Uh, one of them is that I went back and sort of looked at the dates over the last several years for both Pride and Juneteenth. And we're having these two festivals two weekends in a row historically. And, you know, the Juneteenth, the actual day of Juneteenth was June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. So I understand that the Juneteenth celebration should be, you know, June fifteenth. One year it was June eighteenth, um, another year it was June fifteenth again. That one, I get it, that should be close to that actual date of June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. However, the Pride Festival, Pride Month is June one through June thirty. So just throwing this out there, it might be more advantageous to get the heads in beds, create some space between these two events because they, they're very different and they're unique and special in their own way. But because they're two weekends in a row, I would just maybe encourage the organizers to maybe have the Pride Festival earlier in June, bringing more people in, um, get a little breather before the next event. Um, and I think that that might be helpful. So I just wanted to, to offer that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, deliberation on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. On favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everybody. All right, um, we, so number five, Liam McCorkle. This is, uh, going to item new business seven point one, twenty twenty-five legislative priorities. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, Council. Um, as mentioned, I am presenting on the twenty twenty-five cities' legislative priorities. Uh, these priorities have been reviewed by the Legislative Affairs Committee and also informed in part by some of our community boards, including the Community Human Services Advisory Board and the Economic Development Advisory Board. These legislative priorities will be used in the Washington Legislative Session starting in January of next year. Uh, encompassing the, uh, the legislative priorities are all contained in your packet, but just to give a brief rundown of all of them, uh, it's separated into the state budget, which includes potential requests for rotary field turf replacement, uh, festival lot site preparations, diversion programming and co-responder programming. Uh, of course, transportation requests, including state Route five twenty-two, railroad crossing feasibility studies, U S two Monroe bypass and U S Route two. Uh, on the back page, there is also state policy priorities, including those surrounding housing, so addressing homelessness and affordable housing, those surrounding public safety, including safe street, safe, safe road travel, excuse me, and, uh, co-responder programming. And then also legal reform, uh, for public defense standards, juvenile access to attorney reforms, public records litigation, uh, and tort reform. And then finally, working with our federal legislative partners on a couple of priorities, including continuing funding for rail crossings, uh, safe streets for all funding, uh, monitoring the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds, um, and then continuing to serve just as a federal policy resource for our representatives and partners. Um, with that, I just want to outline that the purpose of this, uh, these legislative priorities are to concentrate the limited city resources we have on, uh, focal points moving into the twenty twenty-five legislative sessions. Uh, this is not necessarily set in stone. As new topics come up, they will, of course, be reviewed and brought forth to council, um, as needed or requested. Um, a lot of these points are mostly to serve as a placeholder to understand what we are going to focus on as a city moving into the legislative session. Uh, with that, I do want to mention that A W C City Action Days are February nineteenth through twentieth. If you have not emailed me already, please make sure to do so. I think the lodging and hotels information just came out, so I would love to know if you are planning on registering. And then we also have Mr. Luke Esser here, who would be able to help answer any questions on the upcoming legislative session or our legislative priorities, if so requested by council. So with that, I will turn back to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Um, obviously, first time seeing one of these, uh, before approving it for the next year. But, uh, U S two Monroe bypass, I understand that it can't hurt to have more things to a certain extent on here than less, but, I mean, being the, the estimate for that is six hundred and thirty million and it's been difficult getting forty million for five twenty-two. Is it necessary to have it on there? Would it be good to pull it and focus resources more or what's?
Yeah, so, um, I talked with staff a little bit about it and of course Liam, or somebody else can chime in. But, uh, the Department of Transportation is going to be sponsoring, uh, five-two-two, uh, if I remember correctly. And so, uh, it used to be that Representative Eslick would sponsor, uh, U S two and we would, uh, sponsor five-two-two. Um, there can only be one sponsor. And so, um, since, uh, D O T is taking five-two-two, um, well, of course, we're gonna support five-two-two, but there's nobody now supporting Highway two. So now we are supporting Highway two since Representative Eslick is, uh, in a different district and we don't have anybody else from our district supporting, uh, five, uh, Highway two at this time. Uh, did I get that right?
You did, and the, the reason why that's particularly important is because if you take a look at the city's transportation element of our comprehensive plan, uh, without the five-two-two bypass. of our comprehensive plan, without the 522 bypass, we're at level of service F on US 2. So we will be looking for another legislative sponsor for that project so we can return to primarily sponsoring 522. But for the time being, the only other option was to let US 2 drop off the list, which seemed unnecessary at this point, again, given the fact that we need that for future transportation levels of service.
Are there other US 2 improvements that could be lobbied for that could help work towards improving that level of service? Like, I know for a while, there was conversation about a roundabout at the end of town or something like that. I know Sultan's push has been for, I don't know, more lanes. I've heard that stuff.
We should probably bring Public Works Director James Evans forward to answer those specific questions about other projects that were identified as part of the transportation elements that could address levels of service.
I'll take staff's word for it on the research. And maybe we can come back at another time.
Be happy to come back and talk more about what the projects could be along US 2.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the 2025 legislative priorities or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I just had a question under state budget requests, capital budget. The rotary field turf replacement for $350,000, certainly important. Just wondering how that was selected. And it's a lot of money. There are many needs within our parks and within Monroe. I'm just curious if you could explain to me how that one was targeted.
So we had originally applied for a Recreation and Conservation Office grant for that project and thought that it would be very competitive. RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office, has changed their criteria. And so they're beginning to focus on communities that haven't previously received grants. And Monroe has been very fortunate in receiving a number of past grants through RCO. So that project wasn't selected. Unfortunately, we have an immediate need on that field, and we don't have anything in the budget in order to cover that cost. So if we want to be able to continue to use rotary field even into next season and the seasons following, we're going to need to replace that turf right away. So I think out of all the projects that we have, that one has a really great chance of getting some funding through the state's capital budget just because of its connection to communities that don't necessarily have access to sports fields. So I think that that's a really competitive option for us. But I do get your point just about needs in general. And I think that's going to be an ongoing conversation because, again, we used to be very competitive through RCO grants. We're not anymore. We do have on the strategic plan, you'll see coming back to you in December, a parks bond. And so we just went out for a levy. That wasn't successful. But we do need to, I think, really focus on what are we going to do long-term in order to fund park facilities? Because currently, we're not collecting, obviously, adequate revenues through real estate excise tax and other sources. So that's a bigger conversation we need to have.
That's great. Thank you. And that's exactly why I asked, because of the situation we're in now. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Walker?
I move to approve the 2025 legislative priorities.
Beaumont, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Beaumont for the requested action, as shown on the slide for 7.1 New Business, 2025 Legislative Priorities. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go on to, if I got everything correct, council member reports. So far, we've been very lucky. We've had some flickering of lights here. I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to do this in a predictable fashion. I'm going to start off with Councilmember Gamble. I'm going to go down the line. Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Fulter. I was going to say Councilmember Heather. Councilmember Beaumont. Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, in all seriousness, we won't have a meeting next week because of Thanksgiving. And I just want to reiterate how thankful I am to each of you and to all the staff and for everything you do. And it really, truly makes this position a joy to come to on Tuesday nights, so. That's it.
Okay, now I have something to say.
No, he just went through. Okay. All right. All right. So happy Thanksgiving. Next item then that we have is staff department reports. The report from community development is in the packets. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. I'm just doing this right now just because of the power could suddenly go out. All right. Did you want to report on anything? Or are you good? Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and go on to the city administrator report, extended agenda, Administrator Knight.
All right. So the extended agenda, as Councilmember Hanford indicated, we will not be having a meeting next week in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. There we go. Looking forward then to the first meeting in December. We will not have a Public Safety Committee meeting, but we will have a regular business meeting. And we will have a couple of items coming back to you for action. We have the resolution, the annual resolution for the city's fee schedule, which will be effective January 1, a contract with a company called Azovar. They would perform a revenue audit for the city, a resolution extending the inter-funds loan for the purchase of the festival lot, and an economic development contract to extend Patrick Doherty through 2025 and 2026. Under unfinished business, we'll have the 2044 Comprehensive Plan first reading coming back with Kate Turtolo, and then the department reports.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Gamble did indicate that he would not be here on December 3 due to a conflict. Okay. We will expect you not to be here, and we'll be pleasantly surprised when you are. Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. Administrator report?
Thank you. Just a couple of reminders. The Economic Alliance legislative kickoff is Thursday, December 5 at the Elks Lodge. So if you're interested in attending, please contact Liam. And then that same day, AWC is doing their legislative session preview. That's online, and that's from noon to 1:15. So you can get a complete overview of what's going on in the legislative session. Apparently, December 5 is the day to have those discussions.
Okay, any questions? Okay. For me, just, your report is in the packets. We are putting together the priorities for next year. I know that the council talked for some time about traffic cameras. I just want to confirm, is there an interest in having the traffic cameras on the agenda for next year? Okay, hedgeron nodding, perfect. I will put it on there. There wasn't an affirmative motion. I just wanted to make certain that I understood the will of the council, which I thought I did. So we'll make certain that that's on the agenda as well. All right. I do have a message from Sheri. I just want to make certain that we've got this cleared up. We're good, right? Okay, what's the question? The consent agenda was approved, yes. Yes. Everybody remembers approving the consent? Yes, okay. Yes. Okay. And with that said, Dever and I are going to be heading out east tomorrow. And we'll be there to receive the accreditation along with our command staff. So very happy to be receiving that. I'm pretty certain this is the first time we've ever been accredited. And this is a really big deal. I appreciate that PD was able to find the time and make this happen. So when you do see them, when you see the chief, the deputy chief, the commander next week or the week after, please, you know, congratulate them. This is a big deal, so. We'll be back on Thursday with the weather. And I think, oh, have a happy Thanksgiving. And I will see you all after Thanksgiving. Oh, we have Light Up Monroe on Sunday. I'm heading out on a train to Montana. I expect to be back in time for that. But if I'm not, Mayor Protem, are you able to do the light thing? Excellent. Great. I'll keep you posted as we're chew-chew-chewing along. Yeah, we'll do, there might be too many people there. Notice. Notice a potential quorum. Okay, cool. I think we're good. So unless there is objection, we will be adjourned. We are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you for your service.